One. Allegions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we can let's have a moment of silence for the two police officers from Burnsville that are killed in line of action and a one paramedic firefighter down there. Just a few moments of silence to remember those faithful officers we have out there. Thank you. Agenda confirmation, anything to add, Carrie? Agenda confirmation, anything to add?
No.
I'll make a move ahead.
Moved or approved?
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Dave second by here, come on, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes of twenty-fourth. Correction?
Mr. Chair, on page two of four, on number five, a discussion on place, it should be accounting rather than just accounts, I think, you read better. Number.
Which one was that?
First bullet point under number five.
Okay.
It just should say accounting rather than accounts. On page three of four, on the bottom, on number three, second bullet point, number two, Richard, you'll have to correct me, or was it, it was, it says recommended with required lighting, but I thought we were going to require lighting, not just what it was required, but that's your motion. Some of those towers are not required if they're under a certain amount of feet, I'm not sure what, if this one, I think this one is required lighting, but was your intent, if it wasn't up to that threshold to require lighting, to have required lighting, to require lighting on the top?
You know, and I was actually thinking if they required it, and the only thing, the only reason I would say Barry is because then I did get a phone call from a guy about this, and I don't mind it having required lighting as long as it doesn't bother anybody, but he told me about a guy that lived next to the tower and the light was bothering him. So I, is there a chance of that there?
I don't know this site specifically, but I know when, when it went down, when down in my area, it wasn't required lighting, and one of the pilots in the area asked that it did be required lighting for the safety of flying, and so we did that, and I know like the MinDOT tower at my place, by my place, it's, it's white during the day and then it's red at night, so it, I mean, I'm, I don't see it anyway, but so it's, so it's very less, I mean, if it was a bright white light, I could see that it would be, but, I mean, I'm just asking your worded.
Yeah, and I, you know, to be honest with you, I don't remember how we said.
I think that is tall enough, it requires lighting anyway, I think they have to be under two.
I believe it does.
But my question was, did, in your motion, was it the required lighting, or were you going to require lighting, and that's, that's the.
If required, I thought it was.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I thought if they require it.
I believe.
That it could be there, and if somebody asks us something later on, I don't have, you know, I just want to make sure that it's not shining in somebody's living room, like this guy had explained to me that they couldn't keep it out of there, he had windows right to the peak, and.
But if it's required, it won't matter, I mean, or worded, or worded doesn't matter, so.
I recall the conversation that it, with required lighting, not that we were going to require it, that we were going to.
And that's kind of the way I thought it was, too.
Okay, so it's properly then, okay? Okay, and then under page four of four, I think that there was, on letter A, I think the last sentence where Commissioner Jepson made a motion, I think that should be eliminated, because this should be one motion, I believe, because it was a friendly amendment, and then, then it was a roll call after.
Yeah.
So when you discuss about Dave's, you could even eliminate.
Instead of made a motion, amended the motion?
Yeah, well, just, just set Commissioner Meyer second the motion, so it should just read, the first motion should just be the whole thing, and then Dave second, and that was fine with the motion maker and second, and then we had the, and then eliminate what your, what you were saying, because that's, that's the consensus that everyone was under, I think.
I got on page three of four, under planning and zoning, number two, the third bullet, should we put Steve's name in that motion? Because it just says motion second to table and definitely no callback date, it doesn't really say what the motion is for, or does it, is it understood that it's about?
Yeah, it should be, yeah, motion second to table and definitely the removal of a planning condition measure, and then his name, probably, that give it specific.
I think that's all I got.
I had one on two of four, under six, second bullet point, second improved motion to second improved DDA recommendations, I just thought, should be salary comm scale with the exception.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep.
Anything else? Not motion to approve with changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with changes.
I'll second.
Further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then the meeting of, special meeting of the eighth, I just had one correction refers to, what, Chair Nelson?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it, and. And also under the last bullet point, roll call vote, all in favor so far, and also for the finance committee to come up with salary for.
Oh, yeah.
Infram administrator?
Yep, correct.
Include that in there, okay?
Did you see there are two spots that referred to Chair Nelson in that, in those minutes, under number one and on the bottom?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Around the finance minutes, there's a step, and then the corresponding number isn't the same.
Are you talking about in our upcoming finance, so this, we're talking about the minutes for our, so we're just wanted to clarify that the finance committee was going to set that, to reference that in the minutes, so.
Thing else, motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Erica, second?
Second.
I was going second.
Erica, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda, anything there you want pulled? Not move, her motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Erica, further discussion?
I did just want to note for the out-of-state training request, D, that is fully reimbursable.
Yes.
So I just wanted to make sure that, that was noted.
That was the same as last time.
Correct, yep.
Thing else, I think, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Erica. Commissioners, open forum. Thanks. First one is Joe Stinger. Wake on.
Yes, my name is Joe Stinger, I'm still here to support Pat. I didn't like what I seen at the last meeting, you three were against, did things against the voter and fired the administrator. Now, I wonder who, who out here supports their decision?
Joe, probably just across the board, please.
Okay. Well, there's a lot of people out here that support what you did wrong. Then you turn around and give Lindell a second chance. So you're not only destroying the borders of Becker County, which Erica Jepson said it's fractured. I say it's, the board's going to operate like a car with three flat tires from now on. You also are trying to destroy our good planning and zoning board with your decisions. You should be working with them, not against them, and Dave, or Barry, I, I kind of figured out your agenda here now. You are pissed because we got the last administrator fired, your friend, so now you're just paying us back. Well, I'll tell you what, come November, we're going to pay you back. So, when Richard told me this was going to happen, I thought, wow, I got a lot of support, they can't make that bad decision. I said, we'll just play this like a poker game, we'll just give Pat all the aces, but somehow three jokers got in my deck. Jepson and Meyer, you lied to the voters, you said you were going to bring the board together, unite the board, you just fractured it. And so, when it comes to election, the people will have their say there, too. I want to thank Richard and John for all their efforts, and I want to thank, I can't look at them, I want to thank all the people for all the hard work they've done and the support for Pat, and God bless them.
Okay, Brian Alstine.
Good morning, commissioners. First, I want to thank you for the action you made on the Minnesota state flag at the last meeting, we appreciate that a lot, and hopefully St. Paul will take account of what's happening in rural Minnesota and reverse themselves on the new state flag. Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Brian Alstine, I'm from ten forty-one Timber Drive, Detroit Lakes. I'm here today on another issue running through the state legislature that would have a direct impact on Becker County, and that is what they're calling the North Star Act. It's a collection of bills making its way through the legislature that would in effect tie the hands of local law enforcement when it comes to enforcing illegal aliens being brought into or coming into the county. What it does is it, it makes, it bans local law enforcement from having any contact or working with federal agencies when it comes to illegal aliens, and from what we've seen on the southern border, which is completely out of control, not to mention the northern border, we don't know who's coming into this country, there are eight million people that have come in, we have no idea who they are or what they want to do, and if they're brought into this county with restrictions on being able to tell what's up, what they're doing, why they're here, or even getting them out if they're determined to be people who have ill intent, local law enforcement, Becker County Sheriff's Office, for instance, would be prohibited from working with the fed, federal government in taking any action. Me and Lake's area patriots, who I'm speaking in behalf of today, believe that that would be very dangerous for the citizens of this county, and actually any county in Minnesota. Rural Minnesota needs to be heard about this, and what we're asking the board to do is pass a resolution condemning that bill that's going through the state legislature, similar to how you did with the Minnesota flag bill. McLeod County has already done this, I believe in a meeting about a week ago, they issued a resolution, and from what I gathered this morning, Hubbard County is considering doing that as well this week in their, their meeting. I do have packets here if you're interested, and I can either leave them here or distribute them with McLeod County's resolution and a potential Becker County template for you to use, so thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Is that, is that like the sanctuary?
Yeah, I should have mentioned that, it's tied with the sanctuary state.
One of the things that concerns me is it, it takes away kind of some of the discretion from law enforcement, you know, they have that discretion already, and it takes away a tool of the toolbox from them, so I would like, you know, if we could run this through the sheriff's committee.
Yep.
To get some input from, from the sheriff and go from there.
Yeah, I did actually, I sent Commissioner Meyer this, and I think you sent a voicemail that said, okay, I appreciate that.
Yep.
I did also read an article, and I hope it was, that said that they, that they believed that this North Star Act was going to be dead upon arrival, which means that there's likely not the support, however, I do think we should, we should do our due diligence to, you know, send it through our sheriff's department, so.
I agree, I've, I've had that thought, and I've heard that also, and talked to some of our local legislators, and they said, he basically said, don't buy that, they're probably going to circle back and try to put this into an omnibus bill at the end of the session.
Sure.
So I think the more opposition we can mount in rural Minnesota, hopefully our voice will be heard on that.
I'd like to know, I thought the sheriff was the, in our county, was above the federal, isn't it?
No.
Is that?
Sheriff, no one's above federal.
Had the last word, he doesn't.
I believe the sheriff, the local sheriff is the highest law authority constitutionally.
Shane, can you tell us?
He is for the county, we typically don't get involved with federal law, we don't have federal enforcement come off, we've got a few officers that have been sworn with some federal task force stuff, but typically we enforce state laws, the federal laws are enforced by federal partners, so it's kind of a different, it's kind of a Burger King McDonald's thing where they, we're kind of a little bit separated, so, if that makes sense.
Brian, I did read that, that bill that was introduced by, I think she was out of Duluth, from Senator, Senator, was dropped, but like you said, it could come back around, so.
Yeah, there are actually four different bills, two in the Senate and two in the House. One, one establishes Minnesota as a sanctuary state, and the other is the one that handcuffs local law enforcement.
Yeah, thank you.
The other topic of similar concern is the resource officer in the school, now some of that language is, they're modifying, but it doesn't sound to me like it's being modified enough, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not giving those officers, so a way around that is the school won't have resource officers, they'll be tracked with the actual police departments, which might, might just have to be done around here anyway, if we want to go with resource officers, because they're trying to, I just, I mean, they have to have all the tools available, so.
You want to leave that package up, Brian, better give it to Barry, he can get it to the sheriff, to the sheriff's committee and move it forward.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. Let's see, moving on, reports and correspondence.
I can, I'll go first. So I had Lakes Country Service Cooperative meeting, board meeting, we're still reviewing policy, which is interesting. Jeremy Kovas, who is the executive director of Lakes Country Service Co-op, he has been elected to take over as executive director position for the National Association, and that happens in April, so that's a pretty big honor, what they do is they elect executive directors to have a one-year term as the national executive director, so he, so he got elected, and in our state, we have, I think we have eight service co-ops, so, and then other state, I don't know how many in other states, but there's, you know, there's a high number of people to, to become elected, so it's a pretty big honor, so that'll be done in April at the national convention, I believe it's in San Diego, I think, anyway. Then we also, at our meeting, we also had a lady by the name of Ann Kilzer, who is the executive director of the Minnesota Service Cooperatives, which is the organization that kind of governs all the co-ops in Minnesota, and she explained some of the things they do, and they partner with the Minnesota Department, and they work with the Minnesota Health Consortiums, and they also work with all the co-ops in the region, in the regions of our state, so, and they also do some, they do some bordering state information, too, that they can bring back to co-ops, because we share with some of the co-ops in other states of what's working and so forth, and they're in charge of doing that, so, that was actually kind of interesting, because I didn't know much of that. Now, so, and I also, John and I have been, and Carrie have been doing some negotiations, and they've been positive and gone well, so that's a good thing. At a RAC meeting, Recreation Advisory Committee, we talked about, one of the big topics we had was Heather Funk, who is the DNR visitor services, service supervisor, came in and gave us a presentation on how they, of all the, the different types of campsites they have, and mainly, it's mainly in Itasca, because that's where she, she's from, but it, she talked about how they set them up, the different types, and how they manage them, how they charge for them, how they pay, they still, they still have a Dropbox in some of the really remote ones, they also have an app that people can use, the Pay App, doesn't always work well in the forest area, but, but they, then they also, they also have a Dropbox, but because of the issues with Dropboxes can be vandalized and stolen, they also, you can also be on the honor system and mail it in, too, so, they're just some, and the reason why we had her come into the RAC committee is because we want to add some campsites to Chilton Park, and they're going to be primitive, and so we wanted to get ideas on how the DNR manages them and sets them up and, and pay, you know, and does do those, do those sort of things, so that's one of the, that was probably took most of the time of the RAC committee meeting. Dunlop Shelter?
I suppose the accounting on that end would be kind of horrific for accounting purposes to track, track the money, and.
Yeah.
I mean, but I was just thinking maybe, you know, all the, all those different Venmo and, and all the, all the pay, but more options, you give them more accounting nightmares you have.
Yeah, so I, we, we don't, we, we hadn't figured out what would be the best way, obviously the, the Pay App is the best way, but it might not work too well out in the middle of nowhere, so, I don't know, I guess.
You'd probably have to figure out how to pay when you make the reservation.
Yeah, that's the other thing, too, are you going to reserve it, but see, some, but a lot of those primitive campsites, they don't take reservations, because people just come in and then use them and then leave, you know, so, I suppose you can do reservations, but you can, you also have to be able to let people come in and camp, because some people aren't going to reserve them. Then also, the Dunlop Shelter, the, the survey's done, that needed to be done for the grant, so it's ready to go, I don't remember the, the start date, but it's going to be this spring. Also, the Woods and Wheels ATV Agreement and, and ordinance, there'll be a public hearing on that on March nineteenth, and then, what else, oh, mountain trail, the mountain trail link update, so Guy Fisher came in and gave us an update on, the mountain trail is, is linking the, the Heartland Trail to, what's, I wish, I have a map here, the Heartland Trail to, it's, to the trail in Mountain View Recreational Area, so they want to, now, two, two options, they can go from the Heartland Trail, then they can go, go down Tower Road until they get to the Mountain View, then, the only problem with that is, is the grant won't cover the cost of that, because, but if they go through the Detroit Mountain Recreational Area, then the grant will cover all the cost, will cover the cost, because it's a, it's a recreational area. There's obviously a little resistance to going through Detroit Mountain, because there's ski trails and there's bike trails, and bikers don't like to have tarred paths come through their trails, I don't, that's what they said, anyway, I don't, I don't quite understand that part, but, anyway, their, their, kind of the, the recommendation was for the county to get involved and get ahead of it, so that they can be a part of deciding how that trail's going to go, and so Mitch, Mitch and Steve are going to look into that and maybe talk to John Pratt of Apex Engineering and so forth, so, anyway, and maybe also get, we maybe should talk to Cody and get the EDA involved in making, looking at some of that grant information, and maybe other grant information, too, just to see if we can figure some of that out, but, I think that's all I have, courthouse, I think everything's on the agenda.
I think so, too.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, I'll stop talking.
I can go next, we had our housing subcommittee, we're continuing to look at starting a local housing trust fund, as well as what other area counties are doing to address housing, Otter Tail County has a pretty big initiative that they started, Big Build in Otter Tail County, I think it's called, so we, we looked at what they're doing. For the EDA, we got an update from the Frazee Economic Development, Karen Pfeifer came and talked to us, she let us know that there are four new businesses coming into Frazee, so she's hoping that Frazee can continue to grow. We also approved to have a workshop through Minnesota Extension, the workshop is called Understanding and Prioritizing Economic Development Strategies, an Economic Futures Workshop. We chose that one, that was the one that was recommended by Fernando, who had, came and spoke with us the month before, he thought this was a good start, it's a free workshop, so it will, I believe, we, we're going to get going on it right away, I believe, was the plan.
Yeah, we didn't set anything yet, we're, we're talking about it again, we were kind of talking about it.
Yeah, so, that's exciting, I think it's, it's, I believe there's several days with community businesses and area, other, the area EDAs will also be involved, so I think that's exciting. Also had the opioid advisory council, there were four applicants that have approved and agreed to take the funding, the contracts are being prepared.
Are those the ones we approved?
Those are the ones we approved, yep, and they, they have agreed to the proposed funding, because every of the, each of the applicants got a reduced funding from what was asked, so there are reporting requirements, recipients will provide updates, Denise and Amanda, the public health supervisor, plan to present later in the year, once updates come in from the projects, just so we can hear what's going well, what that funding is being used for. We'll also have another round of RFPs to go out, as additional funding is received, we agreed that once the pot gets up to three hundred thousand again, we will have another round of RFPs. Also had Human Services Committee, we went over our 2023 budget, the final budget did have significant, we did come in under budget, about one point nine million dollars, so Denise brought some numbers to us, just to kind of go over, so we could see where that money savings came from, one was for out-of-home placements, we were three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars below out-of-home placements, and two hundred and eighty-nine thousand in payroll savings, two hundred, they, they received two hundred and sixty thousand more in revenue from public health through the SNBC and the Ucare program, which is one of those programs that we, they requested an additional nurse for, and then they also received additional MA recoveries of a hundred and forty-four thousand, additional volunteer driver blue ride revenue of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, and then state RCA was a hundred and four thousand additional than what was budgeted, or what was believed going to come in. Then, we went over, at a meeting in January, there were some safety concerns that were talked about, they did get a light in front of the building that was replaced, but we're still in need of a light in the parking lot, so right now, when workers come, it's dark, or when they leave, it's dark, and the parking lot is completely dark, so Richard had a couple of. So, Richard had a couple of good suggestions about looking at solar lighting. We don't own that parking lot, so it's not necessarily something that we can do. And then they also had addressed a couple of other things, such as protective films on the windows, so you can't see in their basement windows, and a couple of other things that they had looked at, but they've, they're moving towards getting those things corrected. Then we just had our comp plan update, which was just preparing for our workshop, workshop and focus groups coming up this week.
So there, there aren't any poles in that parking lot for lighting?
Which parking lot?
It's the one right across from.
To these?
Right by the.
Yeah, across from.
Post office.
So I don't know if we should maybe talk to the owner of that parking lot. There should be some lighting in there, especially for these people that are coming to work early and leaving late. And I don't know what we could do, but we really should get some there. I never noticed that there wasn't anything there, I never paid attention to it, but it is concerning that there's no lighting there.
And I think, I don't remember who Denise said she talked to, but the suggestion was to have a brighter light up on the building that could point towards there, but then there was concern that it would be too bright for oncoming traffic.
Yeah, and my concern is that, that lot gets full of cars, and even that, I'd still like to see that, if we could have that light there, but we should have some lights. And I guess the guy owns a building to the backside there, and so I would think that he could get power from there. And it's not the end of the world to put some poles in either, you know, they.
Probably Carrie, you have to look in it.
Yeah, and I did talk to Carrie about it, but I wanted to talk to you guys about it, but I think we should try and do something there, so that they have some better lighting.
Did, did you, did she bring up again the safety glass in the front there, when you come in?
Nope, that we did not bring up. She brought, let me look at my. They have a vendor for the window film. They received a quote for panic buttons, so that they can put panic buttons in the meeting rooms. And then, they've researched various quotes to get lockers for the front lobby, so that when you come in, if people are bringing a bags, they leave their bags in the lobby instead of going back in the meeting rooms, but nothing about, about the safety glass there.
Anything else?
Nope, I don't have anything else.
Barry, you got?
What else with Dave? We, I think everything's on the agenda. The other, I went to Partnership for Health. Dave had a conflict with another meeting. So we, we went over a lot of things about FPL, Dave, you have to have them with the acronym, but that's, we have the state and they do it locally, and that's like the, excuse me, the food and beverage?
Food and beverage. BROBs, or whatever we call those.
Yes, they do the bed, they, they monitor bed and breakfast, all the commercial licensures too.
The AMEs?
Yeah.
Yeah. So what they, and what they look at for those is, they size them right, and so it was good conversation to listen about what we're going to be talking about at our comp plan. The fire size, they want to make sure there's fire, CO2 and fire alarms in the house. They're talking about now looking at the water quality in some of those houses. I mean, if it's drinking suitable for drink, you know, I suppose they just say it's suitable for drinking or not suitable for drinking. Occupancy, size that for the septic system, so they coordinate what it was built for, and you're not, then they won't allow more than those bedroom, you know, they won't allow more bedrooms than what it was built for, the septic system unless they upgrade. Substandard room size, you know, there's, there's a requirement for rooms, and so, they're also talking about now looking at the parking, and they're talking about maybe fencing off the drain field in some of those, so. It was good, good discussion and.
So what Barry's talking to, also to, that all those, all the licenses, like, like you said, the food and beverage, that, I think they even do camping, don't they? I think. But anyway, so the Partnership for Health regulates the Clay County, Wilken County, and Otter Tail, and then the Minnesota Department of Health regulates Becker County. So, or manages, I guess, the, so that's the difference, main difference.
We welcome new board member Katie, is it Vate, Vasi? Vasi from?
Vasi, yeah.
From here, she's one of the community board members representing Becker County now. And Ken Silverson gave us the review of the, all the FPL agreements, so I was kind of learning some of the, what they do compared to what we do. And Amanda was online, and she was sending me stuff on, on my phone, so I could get our numbers in comparison. One thing that they're fighting with their locals is a new state fee. Kent was really good discussing about the state is charging fees, and they, all they're doing is getting a piece of paper saying they got the license, you know, so it's another $50 for the, and it was, what he said was per day, like the, like these vendors that go to fairs and stuff like that, so it's, they're, they were trying to hold off on it. There's, there's legislation trying to not require that, because it's just one more piece of paper for another $50 a day that does, no one seems, it's not necessary, and it's just a supplement their, their income, I think. The only other meeting John and I touched base with some watershed concerns, we'll, we'll bring that whole thing back to the board in an upcoming meeting, John, is that we won't, for discussion how we want to move forward with that, so. That was it.
I just had EDA with Erica, she covered that and human services, so.
I'm just going to touch briefly, but like Dave's, I've started negotiation sessions with a couple of the unions, and moving forward, and continuing, I think tomorrow and Thursday or more, so.
Yep.
Pretty much all day, so.
Yeah, all day, both.
Just touch on my attendance at the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference in Washington DC. Very long, full days. First two days, Saturday, Sunday, I went to early, or first attendee training, or, that was quite helpful. From there, right into the policy committees, I'm on transportation. And we did move forward a couple of resolutions, and one could eventually help us here, where counties or regions under 50,000 population, we're going to try to get with, that have an influx, a lot of tourists and stuff, certain times of the year, that border National Refuge and other sites like that, where they're, probably get some additional support to maintain and cover road issues, so hopefully that gathers some traction as it goes through. Another thing, I think we're very fortunate on the main transportation, National Transportation Committee, we're represented on that board by a county commissioner from Blue Earth and a county engineer from Polk County. So, we've got both, county engineer from up, Polk County is fairly rural and understands the issues, and Rich Saunders does a great job, and so, and I'm vice chair of highway safety and stuff like that, so. That could change here, I suppose, to Daniel meeting, some of those might be replaced, but. Did visit the Capitol, they were there, all the legislators were home or not there, and the only one I think was there was Speaker of the House, because there were several armed guards by his door, so I presume he was in there. So, no, it was very overwhelming for first time out there attending this, so. A lot of good information, a lot of talking to other commissioners around the United States, and as far as retention employees and attracting new employees, it's all over the nation, and they're, everybody's struggling, especially in certain areas, law enforcement being one. So, that, talked quite a bit to county commissioner from down in Florida, that's at our table. A lot of issues are the same, so, it's, so. Other than that, I guess, thank the board for allowing me to attend.
Thank you for referring to us.
Yep.
And hopefully keep moving forward on some of our rural issues, so. With that.
One more thing, just to remind everyone on the board that we have Becker Bay, so if you have, if you have something you want to donate to Becker Bay, which is our fundraiser for the food pantry, and this is all donations from employees and commissioners, so our goal, I think, is usually over a couple thousand dollars, so hopefully we can donate to that and get, get that food pantry full of supplies.
Does that start the 15?
Of March.
Yeah.
Yeah, the deadline for donations is March 8th.
Again, maple syrup I'll be putting on, so. Be ready to start making new here, yeah. Okay, thank you. Appointments, I have one, like to reappoint Mike Sharp, City of Frazee, District 3, on the Board of Adjustments. Make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other appointments? Moving on to County Minister of Human Resources, what do you have, Carrie?
Thank you. I just wanted to update, it's been a little over a week since I've had this appointment, and so far, so good. I've been pleasantly surprised of how smooth it has been, and I, I just really want to stress that the, all of the department heads and managers have been very helpful. I met with several of them, so just wanted to give you that quick update. Just to piggyback a little bit on negotiations, we, as a couple of the commissioners have indicated, we have started those, and all of them are scheduled going forward, so that's been, it has been very positive thus far, so we will continue with that. I'm not sure if the board is aware, but, or maybe some of you are, but LALS has a joint stipulation into asking or requesting to add another union, and that is for reorganization after they added the lieutenant position in the Sheriff's Department. And we had taken a look at that, as well as I sent that off to the sheriff. It was really just some restructuring within that, so we potentially will be adding another fourth LALS, just because of how it's structured. Again, I wasn't sure if everybody was aware of that. I will be leaving later today. I did have some discussion with the board chair and the vice chair, not permanently for a conference. I had thought about canceling, not just because of everything going on, but I did have some conversations with, again, with the vice chair and the, and the chair. Since there isn't anybody representing Becker County, and it's a legislative conference, we had some discussion, and I will go and get the information and bring back, so. Let's see, what else do I got? He already mentioned the Becker Bay, so I think that that's really all I have with regards to the report. I did bring through committee an executive search. I started collecting some information, depending on the direction of the board in the future for executive search. With the county attorney and him trying to fill his assistant county positions, he and I had several discussions with regards to using this executive search. DDA, our current, who is doing our comp and salary study, they had a new portion for executive search that I discussed. Really what that is, is it's really just the recruitment portion of it. A lot of these executive searches take you from the beginning all the way through the end, with recommendations for applicants. So the recommendation from both committees, finance as well as the courthouse committee, was to ask for a motion from the board. The cost of that is $12,000, and we're hoping to get enough bang for our buck, if you will, since he has more than one position open, and hoping that that will bring qualified candidates.
Is three open?
I believe so.
Yeah, and I'd like to also point out too, that, that'll be covered by his budget, because he does not have attorneys now, so he'll be able to cover that.
Yeah, I think we need to, because we've had, that has been open for several months.
There is one, one new hire that has accepted, that's in the wings, that's out of state.
Okay, so then we would just have two?
No.
There'll still be three.
There'll still be three, yeah. Yes.
Because we're, we're losing one at the end of March, or one at the end of February, and one March 15th.
Okay.
You need a motion for the board to move forward with the DDA proposal?
I'll make a motion to move forward with the DDA proposal for Assistant County Attorney.
Motion America?
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Paul, Carrie?
All right, just one last thing I failed to mention. I also brought through courthouse committee at the request of the IT Director, an I, on-call policy, so you will be seeing that in the, in the near future. So she has budgeted for that, and there appears to be a need specific for that department. My hope is to write a policy that potentially could be used if there was any need in any of the other departments.
Thank you, Carrie, because that, we did, we forget about that, but that is budgeted for, and it's not for her to be on, because she's taking that full responsibility herself now. It's for some of the employees to share some of that responsibility for being on-call, so she has time, not on-call all, she, no one should be on-call all the time.
She, she did say that sometimes she would get called anyway, because there's things that sometimes she can only do, but yeah, but at least she wouldn't be on-call all of the time. She'd have some employees, they would rotate.
I would be interested to know how often we get calls after hours, like just to know, like, is it?
Yeah, we asked that question, and it was really kind of hit and miss, and it's really hard to predict.
Yeah.
That's a.
Maybe you could ask her, when we, when we bring this back.
Yeah.
Bring some numbers.
She, I don't, she didn't have any concrete data, but she.
Yeah, I don't know that she'd been tracking it fully, but, but she is the one that's being called at this point, pretty much 24/7, so. That's all I have, and I, I think I saw Tessa pop up on here, so if you wanted to move to the.
Tessa, you, there you are.
I am, yep, thank you. I'm going to share my screen. All right, can you see my screen?
Yep.
Perfect, all right. So I met with the Finance Committee on Friday, and the first part of this is kind of what I went over with them, to make sure that we had all the costing options. And basically, from where we started this project, it's the same three that we talked about. Basically, option one is, you know, the 2%, 2.5% COLA, move into the grid January 1st, on their anniversary date, they move an additional step. You'll see the cost, and then what I have in red is the money that we're lacking, because it wasn't budgeted for. So option two, again, is 2.5% COLA, you move on to the grid on your anniversary date, and then get that additional full step. And then option three would be COLA, and then on your anniversary date, you just move into the grid. So, that's kind of the, what I had asked the Finance Committee is, how are we going to finance that? Can you, do we have to create other options? What would that look like? So, with that, I did take into consideration the new classification changes and how that would impact it. It does impact the cost somewhat, because some of them went up. And in talking with them, you know, we talked about these numbers, and I'll go over what their kind of response was, but we also had some questions from the board, and I wanted to just go over them, is, one of them was, what if we change all the steps to one year instead of doing one year, one year, and then at the end, waiting two years? That doesn't have any cost implementation this first year, because we're just moving them into the grid, so there would be no difference in cost for 2024. What if we reduce it from 12 steps? Again, we, the board has approved kind of going to 12 steps. If you reduce it by one step, so meaning you kind of cut off that first one, and that's the new min, it's about an additional $12,000 cost, because you have to move in those employees that would be at one, kind of move to that two. And if you reduce two steps in the second option, it's about $20,000 increase. So, that would be the cost if we took from 12 to 11, or from 12 to 10. The Finance Committee, we talked about this, and the recommendation was to look at option two. Looking at that is, there's a, I would say deficit, but with the insurance savings and other, the finance team was competent, that they would be able to have those fundings. This implementation, we could, you know, change the cost a little bit if you reduce it April 1st. If you reduce it to April 1st, only movement into the new grid, meaning if your anniversary date was January through that April 1st date, you would just move into the grid. You wouldn't move into the grid and additional step, because you've already got in your step for the year. That was kind of the discussion from the committee and their recommendation. Questions on that? Questions on that, that's a lot of information.
Any questions?
The only question I have is the insurance savings. I saw on the other screen you, so that's not a, is that insurance savings on budget, not on actual? Correct? Because the insurance went up, but we budgeted more for the insurance than what?
We budgeted more for the insurance, and that cost savings is for those that waived, actually.
Right, so it's not, I mean, our insurance did not go down in price from last year to this year?
It did go down.
Now, I, I'm pretty sure the insurance did not, the one we chose did not go down in price. It actually went up.
Essentially did.
Well, if you went with the lowest one, so does that average, does that average down then, so we?
Yes, we budgeted higher than that. We, we.
We budgeted for everyone in the, in taking the higher one, and if they took the essential plan, then we have a savings.
As I understood how they budgeted, they budgeted for like a two or three percent increase, and then we actually went down.
Okay. I guess my reference was the plan that we offered.
Yes.
Is higher, but the lowest one where we require is lower than, so that's.
Yes.
It's a dual.
If you wanted a choice.
We are, we are, we are requiring the lowest, which is the essential one, which is a cost savings.
Correct.
Correct. That's where that money came from.
Okay, that, that, I need to be clarified on that, because our base plan actually went up. I mean, our, not our, our plan offered went up, but when we offered the second option, then that brought those required, those requirements less. I'm back on track now for that.
Yeah, I guess Dave and my recommendation is looking at option two, we need to move forward, because this is our hangup with any further negotiations going forward now with the ones we've already met with. They want to see where they're at.
Okay, so this, so the, the step before April first, that would be like believing that we're, that's when we would have our contracts finalized? They would already have that additional step, so that's why they are not getting a step. Correct?
Correct.
That step doesn't help anything if they're below the.
But then, they're going into their.
They're going into the grid, so that would make up that difference. That's, that's a great point. If someone were, like, let's say they're, I'm just gonna use Carrie for example. If Carrie's anniversary were February first, and she were below the market minimum average, she would have gotten her step in the old system, and then she still will move into the new minimum. So we will correct that, if you may, that shortfall. So they will get that, it will just be for everyone else, they'll have a smaller implementation, but those that are below minimum will still move in at their, you know, the rate they should be.
Tessa, did you look at those that would be, be maxed out on their steps?
Um.
That would affect some of those, if, you know, some of those.
Meaning they're maxed out before April first, or would, how many still would be maxed out?
They're maxed out before April first, so they don't get their, their lane?
Yeah, I think that's something that you'd have to talk about with the board, is, is that exact same thing? Is if they wouldn't have gotten a step, and they move into this, and their anniversary date is at January to April, would they still get it? Typically, you just kind of move them into the step, because in the old system, they wouldn't have gotten anything. This way, they'll still get a COLA and an increase, but you definitely could give them a step if you wanted. That was not included in this cost, meaning they would have got, you know what I mean? They were maxed out.
It's, it's those lower ones, you know, those, if they're maxed out, now they get put in this new system where we, you know, they've been, they've been paid at a lesser rate. I mean, those are the ones that, I don't know how you, if you can address that, or.
Yeah, I mean, if they're maxed out in your current system, they're not the ones that are going to be at the low end of the, and we could double check that too. Do you know what I'm saying? Because the ones that are more likely is they're lower in their range, in their ranges. Because your ranges weren't that far off, so if they were maxed out, they should still be in pretty good. But we can definitely look at this. This is basically a guide for the board to kind of continue those negotiations. And there's always going to be those one-off scenarios. And we'll have to address those as they come along, as the unions come along, and all of that. But this is kind of, I think, a big decision for the board to kind of just say, we've agreed to the grid, here's how we plan to move forward, and then have those conversations. Again, it could change, and we can help with that, but I think this is a big decision to kind of let some of those anxieties, you know, when is this going to happen, and all of that? And you would kind of put some of that to rest.
Okay, thank you, Tessa.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that those that are maxed out aren't going to be at a disadvantage if their anniversary date was before April first, compared to those that are after April first, but.
Right, that's.
Sure, and we could look at those, yeah, we can look at those. I mean, you have quite a few that were maxed out. So if, if, if the board's desire is, we still want to honor this additional step, we definitely can do that. Some philosophies would be, you know what, you've been maxed out, you know what I mean, in the old system? If we didn't do anything, you wouldn't have gotten anything besides a COLA. This way, we're giving you something, and we need to fix the ones that are under. But I can definitely run that number, just so you know, going into negotiations, who those employees would be.
Sounds good.
Otherwise, are you looking for a motion to?
Yes, we need a motion to move forward this, and I think the one the Finance recommends, the one that's referred to is 314.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to move forward with the recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Motion America.
Second, and that's option two, like on the screen.
Yep.
Barry, you second? Second by Barry. Further discussion? Hearing none?
Mr. Jarrett, do you want to set a date of implementation?
Well, that one is April first.
That's what we talked about, but I just want to make it clear.
Is that set and so on? I'm not sure.
Tessa, would you recommend having a target date for implementation?
I just give you like that April first date, because March is right around the corner. Do you know what I mean? And to get it implemented, I just think you're gonna have more moving targets if you tried to do March. April, you know, hopefully your negotiations can continue, and we'll know what that mix of people between January and April is. So that would be mine, just so we don't have so many moving targets.
One thing, payroll has to get a, takes them a little time to get switched over also.
Yep. And it might not be April first to the exact date, but that first payroll, you know, after April first, maybe that's a better wording, do you know what I mean? Because if you run payroll, it depends when it runs. That way would help them kind of move it. I just like April first, one, it's quarterly, so it's easy for me to run numbers. And two, it gives us a month now to kind of get things going, and hopefully move as much as we can.
So we should change the motion, a friendly, to change it to the first pay period after April one? Correct.
Yep, I would agree with that.
Mary, does that sound good for your, for payroll, you think?
We'll still be going into this system though, even if the contracts aren't settled.
So, so you're thinking, Mary, it should go the first pay period after the union contracts are settled?
Or, does that make sense, or do we make it retroactive if it goes past that to the first pay period after April first? I don't know. Is that a bookkeeping right, Mary?
I, I think the question is whether or not, obviously, we're in the negotiations, but we also have non-union people, whether or not you want to split this out, or if you're wanting to wait for contracts.
Well, historically, we've waited for contracts.
We have.
Delicious, I'd still like to have them get it implemented in April.
I would too.
Where we can, got something set, and we're moving forward.
Well, let's, we have a motion, second, doing that, and why don't we shoot for that as our goal? If something happens, we can, we can change it if needed, so.
First amended was first payroll in April.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause, Carrie, thanks.
Thanks, Tessa.
I just have one, I have just a little bit more, so, sorry. At the last board, the board, a board member asked that we relook at the classification of the land use director. At the Finance Committee, we, I, we talked about that, where that position was at a grade 14. That's where it's currently classified at, and it's about 12% above market maximum. If you move it to that grade 15, it's about 18% above market average. I know it's a unique position, because it has several services in that area. And the boards can, you know, ask was, you know, internal equity and accountability and impact of end results. But I wanted to give this to the whole board to discuss either today or at another date, but that was something that was discussed in the Finance Committee.
I think I'd like to address it a later date.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we leave it at for now, and then we look at it, because I think we'll want to look at the whole structure of our, of the land use, and how, how, what rules those are, and even, even how the information's flowing. So I don't have any problem leaving it and reviewing it, and maybe at a later date.
We do this, it can affect other people in other departments also, so it's, it's not just one position, so. Keep that in mind.
I think it's important for the board to recognize as well, this particular department and at least one other, I know has been on Tessa's radar somewhat about the structure of that, and really taking a look at, you know, whether or not there should be career ladders and such. So that's definitely on her radar.
Do we need a motion for this?
Anything else for Tessa?
I just have one more thing, sorry. I have two more slides, and then I'll get out of your hair. I just wanted to talk like next step, so prepare for April first implementation or nearest payroll date. Again, that's a desired date pending union negotiations, so we prepare for that. The other piece I just wanted to throw in, and it doesn't have to be decided to date, but prior to me, it was decided not to have DDA do those jobs. If you want us to write those job descriptions, so take all of those PAQs and put them into formal, that's the piece that the board decided not to do. It would be $24,000, and that would all be completed in 2024. And then in the Finance Committee, they talked about maintaining ongoing maintenance. I suggested taking 2025 off, because you're probably sick of me, and then jumping back into that in 2026, and that would be an annual cost of the $28,000. And that includes an annual market review, all your job descriptions, maintaining them, updating them, and then helping the board in negotiations with COLA adjustments and all of that, so that you can maintain what you're doing. I always say it's like your pavement improvement from the highway. You want to look at the crack filling, all of that, all the time, so you can maintain it and have minimal budget disruption. So that's just something to think about, or act upon, whatever, but I just wanted to throw that out.
Tessa, you are hitting on John's soft spot when you compare it to road construction. So I don't know if you had that planned or what, but.
I think we just consent to the board to probably don't do anything in '25. Let things work themselves out a little bit, so to speak, and probably look at reviewing in '26.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't even look at it in, or I think maybe by the end of '24, we look at some assistance with our whole internal, I mean, like we discussed with land use and our, how, how our, how we flow. So I don't have a problem taking off the maintenance agreement for '25, but I think by end of '24, we need to have a, maybe some job description and, and some of those dialogues prior to that.
I think, Tessa, you said those could be handled on a, one case at a time, or something like that?
They could. I would still, at some point, recommend, I mean, your HR staff right now is obviously doing other things too, is finalizing those job descriptions, because that's where you're going to want to go into those conversations for the career ladders or the department reorganization. And again, totally, you guys can discuss this. I just wanted to throw it in there from the Finance Committee, we just talked about it. So you don't have to make a decision today.
If, in the original proposal, we did have the job descriptions in there, on the original.
I thought it was $21,000, too.
I don't know if it was 21 or 24, but maybe it went up, I don't know. But I just wanted to remind.
I think we visit that later to see where, where we, what we.
Yep, that's fine, okay.
Okay. The last thing, I just wanted to conclude that, you know, the board, and just kind of reiterate this, because I know it's been a long process, there's been lots of anxieties, but the board, I think, has worked really hard in the past two years to move your wages to become more competitive. In 2023, you did a market adjustment. In 2024, we're moving into a new grid that's very market competitive, and the jobs were reclassified. So we surgically fixed some of those jobs that were under market. So I just wanted to, you know, give kudos to the board, and also just to reiterate to those listening that, you know, the board has worked on this for a couple of years. Sometimes it takes slower to get there, but I just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you, Tessa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Number four?
Yeah, Cecilia.
Cecilia and Elliot are here. Come on up.
Hi, Cecilia, welcome.
Good evening.
Morning. Morning, Elliot. We have a meeting next Monday.
Yes.
I'm, I'm, we may have a conflict, but I should be able to make it. I think basketball's tournament starts, and I think they start Monday night, so. You know how that goes.
We'll miss you.
I will probably, if it's early enough, I should be able to make it.
I'll be there.
Well, good morning. I would like to introduce myself again, Cecilia Amadou. I serve as the Regional Director with the University of Minnesota Extension. My office is at the Moorehead Regional Office, and I'll let Elliot introduce himself.
Yeah, hi, my name's Elliot Lawrence, and I am the Becker County Local 4-H Educator.
And today, we come in front of you just to kind of share problematic updates within our department. In our office, we only have the youth educator as Elliot. And first, we would like to thank you for your continued support for youth programming in Becker County. We believe that as University of Minnesota, we can't do the work we do in communities without the continued support with our county commissioners and our county partners. So we're really thankful that we are in negotiation here this year, but we are here today just to share an update with you. And we'll be back to talk more numbers, as you've been talking about. So I'll hand it over to Elliot.
Yeah, thanks. So I just brought some numbers from 2023, and Barry, if you show up to our meeting next week, you'll hear it again. And Erica, I'm sorry, you'll hear it again as well. But some numbers, we've got statewide numbers in front of you, and then also county numbers. And we, 4-H in general, took a little bit of a hit in 2020, as a lot of things did. And if you're not familiar with the 4-H concept, we kind of go by the motto, learn by doing. And so in 2020, it was kind of hard to do that doing. And so Becker County did go down in numbers in 2020, but we're, we are rebounding every year. Since 2020, we have increased numbers, which is awesome. The state has also increased numbers every year since 2022. So on the handout you have, and I also sent Peggy a PowerPoint, and if you want to share that with everybody, that's fine. Or you can share it up on the screen, it's either way. It kind of says the same stuff. I go in a little bit more detail on the PowerPoint. But in numbers, 41,580 total, there you go. And in, in the state of Minnesota, and we've got 243, 273 up there on the screen if you count the cloverbuds, which cloverbuds are younger kids. And so 273, 41, 580 across the street, go ahead, across the state. Go ahead, next slide. And so, so diving into a little bit more detail of the Becker County numbers, as I said, we've got 273, that's up 19% from last year. And this is 2023 numbers, so it's up 19% from '22, '21, '22. And then we have 43 new members, which is up 23% from the previous year. And then we have 23 first-gen members, which first-gen members we classify as, no one in the family has ever been involved in 4-H. Parents, grandparents, brothers, sisters, no one has been involved with 4-H. And we have an unbelievable increase last year of 109% from the previous year, those first-gen members. Go ahead, next, next slide. So we've got these first, first-year members, there's 9,100 throughout the entire state of Minnesota. And two-thirds of those are those first-gen 4-H families. The state retained about 72% of its membership from '22 to '23. At Becker County, it's kind of hard to calculate the county retention rate because of the data. hard to calculate the county retention rate because of the data that we have, but we have somewhere around 80% retention rate in Becker County. So it's pretty awesome. Next slide. Once again, 43 first-year members, 23 first-gen members. There's a very, a bunch of different ways that we reach these first-year members and the first-gen members. This is a picture of a photography club that was started and it was kind of, it was, so it was, the, the goal of that was to get these new members and these first-year members that maybe had never been a part of 4-H before. Next slide. And so youth by learn by doing, as I said, is, is our motto. So there's nearly 2,000 events throughout the entire state that you can, that youth can participate in, and it really adds a depth to the, to the process, the learning process and the, and the overall 4-H career. Go ahead, next, next slide. 102 youth in Becker County, just Becker County, 102 youth participated in 37 unique 4-H events throughout Becker County, throughout the Northwest region and throughout the entire state, and also throughout the United States. We, that previous picture actually was a group of high schoolers that went to a national 4-H program called Citizenship Washington Focus. We had five go in '20, I think that was actually '22, and then we have seven going this year in June. So it's pretty awesome. Go ahead, next slide. Here are some of the programs I'm not going to go through. Here's some of the events that that our Becker County kids participated in. And these are some local events and some, some statewide, and as I said, some national events too, and some regional events. Go ahead, next slide. So one of the things that, that we really value is giving the kids a platform to share what they learned. And one of the biggest ways that we do that is not only the county fair, but the Minnesota State Fair. As you see in the quote there, one of our 4-Hers gave me this quote that our county fair is a small but intimate fair, but she likes that because she gets to know everybody and makes these lifelong friends from fair. And it's really an awesome thing. And I would honestly disagree with her a little bit in saying our fair really isn't that small compared to a lot of other fairs, but, but that's what she said. So next slide, please. And so 24,000 youth across the state of Minnesota showcased projects in either county fair or state fair. Go ahead, next slide. And so here in Becker County, we had 181 total youth showcased at the Becker County Fair, 179 youth showing animals, 61 youth showing static, or we're now going to use the term general projects. We just changed that about a week ago. We're, we're no longer static projects, they're general projects. We had 65 volunteers involved at the fair, and we had 24 judges involved at the fair too, at the county level. Go ahead, next slide. So Youth Leaders in Minnesota is a picture of another great opportunity. It's, it's called BLUE, Believing, or some, it's an acronym and I can't, I can't remember what it is right now. It's a leadership opportunity. It's a regional, done at regional levels. These are the, the five youth that participated in BLUE last year. Go ahead, next slide. And one of the, one of the young ladies that participated in BLUE actually gave me this quote, and she thinks, you know, she, she is currently our, our 4-H, our county 4-H council president this year. And if you would have said that a couple of years ago, everybody would be surprised because she's, she's a very quiet, introverted girl, but through 4-H, she's learned all this leadership skills. And she's really come out of her shell in the past couple of years. Just in the last year since I've been here, she's really come out of her shell. Go ahead, next, next slide. So through leadership, leadership through service, service projects are a huge thing in the world of 4-H. Three and four Minnesota 4-Hers, so it's a pretty, pretty good percentage volunteered in 2023, and it helps, helps communities thrive. Go ahead, next slide. And the, the programs, with that last slide, we have a lot of different volunteer community service projects going. We have a good partnership with a lot of the, a lot of the retirement homes and assisted living centers, and a lot of 4-H clubs do a lot of volunteer work with those throughout the year. So this is a quote from one of our 4-H volunteers. We thrive by using volunteers. 4-H is a volunteer organization. I, I'm the only person that's, that's really hired to, to run the entire county, and I rely on a lot of volunteers. And so throughout the entire state, we have 7,400 volunteers. Melanie is, is a excellent volunteer, and she has a really great quote about, you know, why she volunteers. Go ahead, next slide. So alumni is also, we get a lot of volunteers for the alumni too. Another quote from one of our Becker County 4-H alumni, who is also a Becker County 4-H volunteer. She's also our Becker County 4-H treasurer, and she does a whole bunch of different stuff. And so her daughter is actually the one that I got the quote from that, that did some leadership stuff. And so it's, it's a great opportunity, even for adults, and we have just a ton of adults that, that really dedicate a lot of time to the program. Go ahead, next slide. And that's, that's all that I have. If you have any questions, as I said, most of the information is on the handout, and Peggy, of course, has the PowerPoint she can send to you. My contact information is on the bottom of the handout. If you have any questions or comments or want some clarification, go ahead and email me, and, and I'll get back to you. Thanks.
Any other questions for Cecilia Elliott?
No, thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mary.
Good morning, commissioners. I would like to start with the license renewal list. First item is on sale with Sunday's renewal for Hotel Shore, Chul Hanson Lake Township.
Move to approve.
Second.
So, do you want to do them all?
Do you want to do them separate or all at once?
Can we do them, can we do them together?
Yes, if, if we get motions.
Okay. I don't know, they're all, they're all different renewals.
Right, no, I was going to go through each individual.
Yeah, I think we have to do each, each one. Would be best just to do each one.
Motion and a second.
Just a question, these, you can't put these on consent agenda?
We never have.
I know, I just, that's why I'm, if you can't, if we can't put them on consent, I think you'd have to look into that and put them on consent if you can motion them all together.
If they're all.
If we can just do them separately.
See why not, so.
Okay.
On paper of Hotel Shore.
Aye. Aye.
Pose.
Next, off sale renewal for Lake Scormer Liquors, Aaron Hasselson, Erie Township.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Eric, second by Barry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carried.
Next, club on sale with Sunday renewals for Green Valley Golf Course, Mike Levine in Corman Township, and Frazee Golf Course, Dan Carlisle in Burlington Township.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
3-2 on sale renewal for Cedar Crest Resort, Brian Schneck, Maple Grove Township.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ryman Strong Bear on sale renewal, Cedar Crest Resort, Brian Schneck, Maple Grove Township.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, discussion. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carried.
Next, on sale with Sunday's new and the 3-2 on sale, they are not a new owner or a new business, but because Peggy Branstrom added LLC to her business name, the state is requiring us to consider them as new. She has Osage Bait and Tackle, now LLC in Osage Township.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then we have Club on Sale Renewal for Corman Lake Sportsman's Club, Laurie Zeski, Corman Township.
Did we do both the on sale and the 3-2?
Yep.
Yeah.
We did both of them.
Yep, for those seeds of bait and tackle, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal for Corman Lake Sportsman's Club.
I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave, for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And finally, we have a temporary one to four day on sale liquor license for Detroit Mountain Rec area, Tom Thiel, March 2nd, 2024.
So move.
Motion by Eric.
Second.
I just have one question. So just, just, it probably doesn't mean anything, but Detroit Mountain is owned by the city of Detroit Lakes, correct?
But the contract.
But the contract, okay. No, that was my question.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carried.
The next item I have is the memo to the board to set the canvassing date for the presidential nomination primary, which will be held on March 5th. We will be doing canvassing. This went to, I believe, courthouse or finance. We're setting, we're requesting to set the date March 7th at 3:00 on the second floor to certify, review and certify the election results. We need two commissioners to be on the canvassing board. It was suggested that the finance.
It doesn't matter. We, we said the courthouse for this.
Courthouse.
Do you want, if anyone wants to do it?
Yeah.
Volunteer.
I like courthouse committee.
Thank you.
You're going to need to wait in.
And this is just, this is, this one's just for the primary. There'll be the other one set for the general election in November.
Motion to approve the March 7th, 3:00, and the courthouse committee as far as commissioners?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Just a, just a stipulation, if one of those commissioners can't make it, an alternate can be applied, and this is a per diem meeting.
Okay.
If that's.
Motion by Eric, second by Dave, for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carried.
Thank you.
Shane.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. First of all, I'd like to thank you for taking the moment to silence the beginning of the meeting. It means a lot. Great tragedy for those involved and for the families of those involved in the department. We feel that ripple across state and just wanted to acknowledge you taking the time, how much it's appreciated. So we have one item for you today. It's a space needs feasibility study from Klein-McCarthy. There's some space needs for the sheriff's office. One of the things that we've been discussing in committee is, is moving our impound building from its current location where we've got some critical space needs there. That building is, doesn't serve our purpose, and it's been a struggle for quite a few years now. So the talk has been about moving that out to the jail site. In order to do that, there's limited space there to look at how that will affect future needs and possible growth. So Klein-McCarthy has put together a proposal for $5,500. They were the contractor for the jail, so they're familiar with the site. And so they would look at what's left available, where buildings might fit to fit those needs of the sheriff's office.
Sheriff's going to need to review that?
Yeah, we, we agreed that that would, they would be the best one. They've got the, the runoff and the water already kind of figured out for what's there and, and you never know what's going to happen, but we want to make sure that we have space if something is built in the future near there too. So don't want to put the handcuffs on future decision-making on, because we put it in the wrong spot.
Yep. This is something we've talked about for the last couple of years when I was still on sheriff's committee, and I think it's well needed. So do I have a motion to move forward?
A motion to approve the Klein-McCarthy proposal.
For 55,500?
5,500.
I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave, for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Carried.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you, Shane.
Thanks, Shane.
Thanks, Shane.
Land use. Steve here.
Yep.
Our county lands are here.
Morning.
Morning.
Our, here today to ask for permission to apply for a grant for up to $300,000 to re-monument section corners here in the county. If this gets funded, we'd also ask if we could possibly spend another $50,000 or up to a certain amount established by the board, taken from a resource development fund to help establish corners and sections where we have tax forfeited lands. And some of those areas, particularly in the Northeast or on the eastern half of the county, those corners are off, like in some areas by a substantial amount. So this would help move the county forward as far as getting better corners. If you look at the counties to the east and to the west, they've already went through this process. And I think it's just time that we move forward and start establishing or re-monumenting these corners in the county here.
And I think we discussed this earlier. We approved moving forward, but we found out that the way that we proposed now is not allowed by the state to move forward with first come, first served and getting some of those. So now we've got a plan to start, start with the section corners. And I think what Steve's asking is that, that we put in another $50,000 to, that will boost our chances of getting the money, I think, and it will actually come out of the resource development fund, which is limited what we can spend it on. And this will, this will help, you know, anyone in that area using those corner, corner sections that doing survey, it should help in, in their cost. It'll be more cost effective because now they'll be public, not just, what do you call it, individual surveying companies will have that. So you want to expand on that at all, or?
No, you're, you're exactly right. Not only will it eventually lower the cost of surveying, but it's also going to help the GIS map to, you know, straighten out some of them lines and correct them where they need to be.
Okay, we got a resolution 2A.
I'll make a motion to approve that grant.
Motion by Richard.
Second. Second.
Second by Barry, for the discussion. And that is to include additional $50,000 from the colony?
From, from the.
Resource Development Fund.
Yeah. If, if the grant is approved.
Yeah.
Thank you for your work, too.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Carried. Thanks. Kyle.
Say Kyle, is our workshop on Thursday going to be online teams? Because I have a conflict and I will not be able to, I don't believe I'll be able to make it.
Okay, we can, can we get that done? 10:00 PM, 10 to noon.
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM to noon, yeah.
10:00 PM, I'm going to be in bed.
I'll be, and I won't be available at all times. I'll have.
I think we're going to do that for you anyways, right?
Well, our tail watershed got moved.
Okay, good. You can be there then.
I have one appointment at 11, but I'll be here to start.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the board have two items for your consideration this morning. The first being memo from the 14th addressed to you folks for requesting some direction on permitting efforts within the Pelican River watershed and the Cormart watershed. Essentially, we just have some overlapping regulation between our ordinance and their rules, specifically with stormwater management and then shore impact alterations. Shore impact is half the setback of the required setback for the lake. So mainly, there's some photos here that I submitted to you guys, the first being riprap, a retaining wall, a little sand blanket area, and then lastly, some vegetation removal. So again, right now, there's, there's no memorandum of understanding or agreement between us and those two districts. So technically, folks are required to go through both of us, which is just redundant, I guess, in my opinion.
Kyle, this is something this city of Detroit Lakes came up with also where they could, no sense of watershed going on, no sense of county going on, and both permitting are the same thing or overseeing it.
Yep.
So it's just clear thing.
I thought we had this agreement with, with Cormart already, or maybe we're doing it, but not, we need to.
Doing it, but there's nothing in writing.
Yeah.
There's nothing for them.
I wanted to include both watershed districts, so they're.
And I think that, you're going to bring wordage back to us then?
Well, I'd like some direction on what you want. You know, there's, the, the city of Detroit Lakes, their last letter addressed to the watershed last year was for Pelican to continue with shore impact alterations, but they were going to handle the stormwater management for like MS4 and things of that nature. So I'm. So, I'm not sure, I, I don't, right now, I don't have an opinion on what, you know.
You know, there's been a lot of, lot of problems with Pelican doing this permitting, and it's been going on for years. And I don't know why the county just doesn't do it. I mean, they.
Well, we, we can.
We had the room full last summer, and one guy had, they made him get a forty thousand dollar surety bond, but when the board looked at it, they lowered it to five hundred bucks. The other guy completely, he, he did all the work, they had him pair it all out. It was worse, so they had him put it all back. And it's, it's been going, the abuse of power's been going on for years there. And it would be a lot fairer to the residents to just have the county permitting.
I don't think that we have the authorization not to, to dictate to them that they can't make a permit required. Is that correct?
I think what we're looking for is so we're not duplicating our services, one or the other handles it.
Right, and I'm, I'm fine with if Pelican's doing it, but, but I think what Richard's talking about is having us do it. I don't think we can require the, I, I think we can require us doing it, but I don't think we can require that that's not, I don't think we can stop them from issuing a permit.
Well, the way, the way this started was some discussion amongst their members, but there was no action from them. Some are one way, some are the other way.
I think Rick, Rick Michelson's now the new chair, I think, um.
And I think what they're looking for, just a understanding, okay, county, you're gonna take care of this permitting.
Right.
And inspection.
Yep.
And we'll take care of.
Well, we certainly don't need to do a double inspection. If they're doing it more, more restrictive than we are, we don't need to go out and look at it.
And some are and some aren't. I mean, our vegetation alterations are more restrictive than them. Um, they have a replacement plan for trees, um, we do not. They can permit cer, both Cormott and Pelican can permit certain tree removal of live trees. We do not have that. Um, so there's some give and take there.
I mean, I'm fine with us giving the watersheds the authority to do that, to do whatever. I don't, I don't think we have the authority to say that they're not permit allowable, I mean.
I, I think you should hear from some of these residents.
I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing whether it's good or bad, I'm saying we don't have the authority to say that they can't issue per, they can't require a permit from them.
I didn't understand it that way, but I guess I.
I, I don't, I don't. The question is, is, you know, with us still involved, is there some recourse for those homeowners? That's where a lot of the stuff gets ironed out. But.
You know, sitting in on the watershed meetings, that what I hear is, let's not duplicate our services out there. And that's what we've got to come up with, okay? Watershed, you're still, okay, handling this, and county, we're gonna do this. And I think that's examples we gotta come up with.
Has the watershed's input been as far as what they want to do or should do or?
I believe they're happy with the MOU with the city, and it, it seems to be working. Not saying that the city can't call the watershed in and, and for advice or help out on it in the same way the county could, so.
I've heard both sides.
I've heard from board members that, that want us to do the permit.
There's some very strict opinions or heavy opinions on both sides of the fence. And no one, I, to my knowledge, there's never been actual board management, uh, action.
No. And right, um, it's kind of a split.
Right.
Board on that, and there's probably majorities in the watershed, so. But I think we just want to, so we're not duplicating services out there.
Right.
And spending taxpayer dollar for both of us going out.
Yeah, hundred percent, there's no, there's no sense of it.
Guidelines or whatever, I want to refer to, we have to come up with.
Right.
I'd like to know if we, if we can, if Barry's right or not, if they can continue to permit if we are. I'd, I'd like to know that, I, I need a different opinion there.
Well, I do know our rules need to mimic each other, because like I said, they are less restrictive than us in some cases, and we're less restrictive than them. We can't be less restrictive than each other. We would have to be the same. Um, so the discussion, I mean, really started, um, last March or April. Um, they were gonna have a stakeholder meeting and look at rules, um, and, and changing those rules. They do have a new engineer now, they have a new attorney, but the rule discussion really got halted some time ago.
And they're in the process of reviewing the rules too, so there's gonna be some.
Right.
Updating changes there, same way we're going through ours, so.
Yeah.
And I think what they're looking for, they'd like to have it here for the end of month, just some MOU on understanding who's gonna handle what. The input I get from managers over there, so. And we're looking for board direction on it and.
Well, not, I don't, I don't, um, have a lot of information on specifics, but I think I certainly agree with, if, if they're more restrictive on permitting, I, there's no need for us to look at it.
So you don't care if people are getting abused here? Did you hear what I said about, they, they brought, they brought, let me just tell you, they brought these huge rocks from Wisconsin, okay? I watched them come in on flatbeds. The guy put them in his yard and terraced it like this, okay? The watershed didn't like it, okay? They had him take these all back out, these weigh a couple tons, okay? He carried them all back out, and it was straight down to the lake, way worse, they had me look at it twice. And then I contacted one of the board members and I said, this is way worse for the lake than it was. It ended up getting all put back like it was. And so, that's what I'm saying, and I've watched this go on for years and years there. I have had the abuse myself. And, and so what I would say is, I, I want some control over how people are treated in this county as a commissioner. And when it goes over there to those people, it depends on who you are. If you're the right person, we're gonna, you're just gonna do what you want. And if you, if you make us angry, then we're gonna punish you. And it, it, I'm not, the forty thousand dollar surety bond, Barry, it takes quite a bit to get one of those. They hand those out like candy canes over there, go get one, go get one. And I, I watched them in a meeting go from forty thousand to five hundred. And so what I'm, if you, if you don't care about the abuse, then, then that's fine, but you're, you're ignoring what I'm saying. And I can, I could fill this room with people who have been abused by the watershed. And so that, that's where I'm at.
I'm sure Richard's concerns are on certain things, and I think what they're trying to do is correct moving forward with the change in, looking at their ordinances and their rules and regulations and, uh, new attorney, new engineers.
So does it make sense for us to do it now, or do we need to wait until they have all of that figured out?
They would like something now, just a MOU that we're getting into a permitting season. What are we gonna handle in the shore impacts zone and what's watershed? That's.
Do we need more information as to whether or not we have the authority to say, as Barry was saying?
Well, I think we, they just want an understanding, who's gonna oversee.
What?
In the shore impacts zone. One or other handles it.
There's some other things there with water mitigation and things like that that do need to be ironed out as well.
Basically, is, what I hear is something similar what the city of Detroit Lakes came up with. Not saying it's a hundred percent right all the time, but there's some understanding there. Board direction?
So, so if we make an MOU, uh, well, who's gonna do what? And then the ordinance is changing, oh, the Pelican watershed does theirs, we do ours, does that affect the MOU then?
It does, yes.
So we'd have to write that MOU that says that after ordinances are adjusted, we might have to have a different one, correct?
I would suggest that maybe, um, you make some type of ad hoc committee and, and sit down and look at those rules and, and what they are and where we're at and where they are at. Um, because like I said, there's places that are more restrictive and there's places were more restrictive. And we can't be less restrictive than the other.
John, why don't you and Rick sit down and see what you can hammer out?
Yeah, I guess with, with Kyle and. Set something up. I don't know if, something here in the next couple of weeks.
Sure.
So, I know I'll get asked about it, so, or just, or meet on it and.
Right.
And come up with some consensus on.
Yeah, I think it makes sense for us to have a memorandum of, uh, of understanding so that we're not people hitting work. I just don't know what that looks like.
Well, and, and not to leave Cormott out of the top, but we want consistency across the county, right? Whether you live on Bad Medicine, Cormott or Lake Melissa, you should have the same right. Or the same restriction, whether, whatever it is, but.
Yep.
And, and some of these, some of these cases, we'll have to look at changing, in my opinion. You're going to look at changing then countywide, because if you're, if the watersheds are doing something, and we can, we can do that in your discussions, if the counties are authorizing the watersheds to do tree replacement instead of no, no option. I mean, that's something we can look at countywide, and that would fall on then, and, you know, outside of these watersheds, it would fall onto the zoning.
Right.
So, I mean.
It's just an example of what's.
I mean, but, but I am fine with changing those examples countywide then, if we're gonna, if we're gonna change our. I want, I want the same countywide than, than, I don't want watershed specific rules and.
No, I, I, I agree, it should be the same. So, well, let's try to set something up with Rick Michelson.
So, anything further other than the, the comp plan, we kind of touched on that, we'll be meeting Thursday at 10:00. Um, there's gonna be two focus groups, uh, an environmental group and then, uh, a group made up of developers, ag, business type folks, um, one hour apiece, and then we'll hear their concerns, I guess. We'll, we'll be having another one of them, I assume, but, um, probably simultaneously with your next workshop, whenever that will be, but.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Take a short break, we have a public hearing, uh, scheduled for 10:00. Uh, we have a public hearing, according to Minnesota statute three seventy-five eight point zero six subdivision one, public hearing. Wait, we have a public hearing on liquor license, don't we? Pardon?
March fifth.
March fifth.
March fifth, sorry about that. On written charges forming the the basis for termination of the county administrator. Okay, uh, just to let Pat Olin speak.
Hello, Chair.
Morning, and your attorney's online?
Yes, and I think he had something to say if that, if the chair is willing to allow that.
Allow that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, fellow commissioners and counsel. Following the board's three-two vote to terminate Mr. Olin's employment with severance pay and benefits as outlined in his employment agreement, uh, my client has chosen to exercise his right to a public hearing, as Mr. Chair adequately and appropriately pointed out under Minnesota statute three seventy-five eight point oh six. In a minute, he will address the written charges he received from attorney Anne Garing, retained counsel for the county. My client does reserve the right to reopen this hearing upon production of the document Commissioner Nelson and apparently only Commissioner Nelson received from Ms. Garing's office prior to the February sixth, two thousand twenty-four public meeting. That document was referenced during that meeting. Uh, my client has requested a copy of it, but has not received it to date. Mr. Olin, uh, with the board chair's permission, please proceed.
Yep, Chair, go ahead. I'll proceed. Thank you. On February sixth, uh, twenty twenty-four, the Becker County Board of Commissioners voted three-two to terminate the county administrator. Per Minnesota State statute three seven five A oh six, the county administrator, quote-unquote, may demand written charges and public hearing on the charges before the county board prior to the date when file removal takes effect, end quote. The following is a written response to those charges. The county administrator is an at-will employee, and this public hearing is not meant to change the vote by the county board of commissioners, but to inform the public on the quality of work completed by the county administrator from December twentieth, twenty twenty-one to February twentieth, twenty twenty-four, based on the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three open session performance review and the February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four termination letter. Responses to termination letter charges are as follows. Number one, failure to advise all commissioners about significant events impacting the county response. There are no examples from the county commissioners in the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three performance review on failing to communicate significant events. Any review of the county administrator emails to county commissioners will show consistent, ongoing communication to the county board on what the county administrator deems as important and regular county administrator reports to the county board during regular board meetings, communications through relevant committees, and the accessibility for county commissioners to communicate with the county administrator when appropriate. This is a charge with no supporting factual basis. Number two, failure to provide all commissioners with information regarding agenda items. There are no examples from the county commissioners on the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three performance review on specific examples of agenda items. The challenge communicated to the county board of, county board over the last two years are the difficulties in developing a packet of deliverable, deliverables with all contents due to a large number of committees that are scheduled the week prior to the county board meeting. For the last two years, the county administrator has recommended eliminating this committee structure and replace with a committee of the whole system used by most counties. This would allow the county board to review all potential agenda items and decide whether these will be placed on county board agenda. The current committee approach is not a best practice, being costly to taxpayers, taking a lot of staff time and creating the opportunity for open meeting law violations. This is a charge with no supporting factual basis. Number three, failure to provide requested documents to commissioners upon request. There are no examples from the county commissioners in the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three performance review of specific instances regarding requested documents. Commissioner Jepson brought this up, but did not provide a specific example. However, after a review of her emails, there are no outstanding item requests or emails that have not been responded to, nor are there emails from commissioners with any other outstanding requests. The only purported example came from Commissioner Nelson, who communicates three items that were not available for him, including the following: truth and taxation presentation documents presented the day of the TNT meeting, class and compensation study documents provided the day of the finance committee, and no notes from the department head meeting. The TNT hearing and presentation is made available for public comment, and it is a summary of the department budgets that has been reviewed with the county board through committees and county board review. Classic comp data is provided in receipt from the consultant. The department head committee meeting is not a designated county committee, but an informal meeting between the county administrator and department heads. Notes are not required. The county administrator job description requires the county administrator, quote, "Develop a strong management team among department heads to effectively meet or exceed employee customer needs," end quote. And ensures effective, uh, quote, "Ensures effective inter and interdepartmental, uh, by attending and or directing management team meetings," end quote. The charge is unsupported by facts. Number four, failure to communicate with all commissioners. There are no examples from the county commissioners in the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three performance review citing specific examples of unexpected communication. Becker County operates under a county administrative form of government. Items deemed important by the county administrator are communicated with the county board as appropriate through a county administrator report at a regular county board meeting, committee reviews, or email communications. The county administrator is also available to respond to follow-up inquiries, inquiries from the commissioners. The charge lacks support by way of factual information. Number five, failure to follow through on promise to meet with new commissioners on a monthly basis. It is factually incorrect, indicating there was a promise, quote-unquote, "Promise" to meet with new commissioners monthly, nor was there direction by the county board with a vote to do so. The following emails were sent to both complaining commissioners in January twenty twenty-three is as follows. The email to Commissioner Meyer, quote, "Per a phone conversation, I'd like to schedule a monthly one-on-one meeting with you to understand the priorities you have for District Two and the Becker County, and hopefully answer any questions that you may have. My schedule is fairly open on Friday from ten-thirty until the rest of the day. Next week is also open for a meeting. Phone conference call or Teams meetings is also an option," end quote. There was no communication for Commissioner Meyer to schedule additional monthly meetings. Email to Commissioner Jepson, quote, "I'd like to schedule a monthly one-on-one meeting with you to understand the priorities you have for District One and Becker County, and hopefully answer any questions that you may have. My question, my schedule is fairly open tomorrow, Friday from ten-thirty until the rest of the day. Next week is also open for meetings. Phone conference call or Teams meetings is also an option," end quote. There is no future communication from Commissioner Jepson to schedule additional monthly meetings. There have been additional meetings with both that were topic-specific, nor different than the frequency of meetings with other commissioners. This is a charge with no supporting factual basis. Number six, making unauthorized offer, offers to unions beyond the budgeted authority. Becker County was negotiating twenty twenty-two collective bargaining contracts after the twenty twenty-two county budgets were already set and after my arrival in December twenty twenty-one. There have been no discussions that did not go to the county board for consideration and approval. Equally, the business manager must bring a proposal to its members. The goal for twenty twenty-four negotiation was to have a class and comp wage table per the, uh, bargaining unit contracts approved prior to setting the twenty twenty-four preliminary levy. This was delayed to the county board's unwillingness to approve the table. The county administrator is the chief administrator and officer and has the authority to have discussions with business managers of bargaining units, develop contracts, request for proposals, and preliminary agreements prior to county board approval. Per the twenty twenty-one job description, the county board administers, quote, "Oversees the entire county financial system by directly directing, preparing, monitoring, developing projections of the county operating capital budget and executes operating plans and budgets by preparing and submitting recommendations for board action," unquote. All communications with union business managers was appropriate and reflective of the role of the county administrator. This is a charge with no supporting factual basis. Number seven, stating publicly and privately that he only had to keep three commissioners happy, thereby disregarding the collaborative nature of the county government, the interest of all the residents of the county. This is a factually incorrect statement based on a false premise. What I only say in humor is, quote, "You only need three of them to like you," unquote. That is shared humor by other county administrators and coordinators in the state of Minnesota that have five commissioners. No Becker County commissioner has ever publicly or privately asked me to clarify this. However, it's deemed a pejorative without clarification and a reason to terminate my employment without any explanation. In contrast, Commissioner Nelson has communicated to current and past commissioners that he has three votes to terminate the county administrator. This is a charge with no supporting factual basis. Number eight, loss of confidence in the majority of the board. In two years, the following county administrator accomplishments include: Successful negotiating collective bargaining notes for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, developing and implementing the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four budget. Since there's never been a strategy for economic development in Becker County, developing a comprehensive economic development strategy for wealth creation. Since Banning Grade has not been updated in forty years nor the tables, completing benchmarking of wages, a wage study, and a class and comp study. Since performance reviews were not conducted in forty years, with some exceptions, in violation of Becker County personnel policy, the administrator developed a best-practice performance evaluation document requiring direct reports to conduct annual reviews. Exit reviews for employees have never been conducted. The county administrator developed a best-practice document to document reasons for employee exits. Data, um, reveals that fewer people are leaving in the last two, two years compared to earlier years. Job descriptions not updated in forty years. Incorporated a job description update language in the county board-approved class and comp study. There was no plan for onboard training of new employees. Developed an onboard training plan for new hires, conducted regular trainings. County committees operating with no bylaws and violating the open meeting law for twenty years. Department heads were directed to post-agenda items for, excuse me, for every committee. The sheriff's department, ID department, and attorney's office in BCA non-compliance. There was a third-party analysis of the non-compliance, and was created as a top priority for the implementation of BSC updates and procedures. New county-wide five-year capital improvement plan. The county administrator benchmarked analysis of the CIP as a best practice, which was thankfully recently approved by the county board. No committee of the whole meeting resulting in increased costs and low productivity. Benchmark analysis of committee of the whole presented to the board. The board has not taken action on them. No consent agenda, where the vast majority of counties have had a consented agenda. Benchmark analysis of this as a best practice presented to the board. The board approved it, was implemented. Recommended the county board meetings are recorded and made available on the county website. Recommended adding county board agenda to include all deliverables to the county website. Personnel policy has not been updated or reined for decades. Efforts to aggressively update the personnel policy has been delayed by this county board with a moratorium in twenty twenty-three to make no additional updates until twenty twenty-four. Budget financed accounts payable are in the same department. We recommend to place that under county administration. Benchmarking analysis identified this as a best practice. No changes have yet taken place. Recognize the need to promote economic development at the bond hearing prior to the county highway bond has resulted in an improved credit rating to double A plus. The community-based comp plan as already ordinance was outdated. Recommended the development of a new community-based comprehensive plan, which the board approved and is being implemented. A county newsletter to provide thoughtful, fact-based information to the citizens of the county. A survey was conducted to show eighty percent of those citizens want a newsletter. County board has yet to approve, uh, moving forward with that opportunity. Developing a twenty twenty-four county legislative platform. Establishing a benefits committee, which has significantly reduced insurance and ancillary benefits over two years. Uh, meeting the statutory requirements of four seven one seven oh one by adding the three highest-paid employees to the county website. That wasn't done in previous years. Developed RFP and contract for transitioning management care services to Sunny Side Care Center. In response to, uh, performance review comments regarding employees leaving, the county administrator implemented the following. Conducted performance reviews so we develop constructive feedback from employees. Exit reviews to understand why people are leaving. Onboard training to set expectations. A benefits committee to be collaborative to solve problems on benefits and insurance. And as a result, there's been a reduction in staff leaving in twenty twenty-one and has reached its lowest priority in twenty twenty-three. The number of job vacancies is now in the single digits when it was in double digits before. In response to performance review comments regarding legal fees. Prior to the county administrator hire, the county board approved hiring the labor at twenty-three in negotiations. The county administrator lowered the legal fees cost by eliminating, uh, the attorney in negotiations. Collective bargaining units have appreciated the change in negotiation strategy. Palate peers, work refuses, litigation in the county's department, investigations in the sheriff department, and audit of treasury personnel issues have resulted in significant costs of legal fees. The county board should start asking questions about the environment in those departments as it relates to legal fee costs and the reasons, uh, of exiting of employees in those department. Notably, Becker County residents select, elect a county attorney to represent the board as well, but commissioners have not seen fit to, to use that individual instead to retain outside counsel. In response to the performance review comments regarding feedlots. The feedlot issue is the result of the county board passing a motion without staff input. The county administrator has repeatedly communicated at the county board meeting that the moratorium did not meet state statute. In twenty twenty-two, Commissioner Nelsoning Grimsley passed a moratorium without the item being on the board agenda and without consultation of the planning and zoning staff, county administrator, or county attorney on whether this followed state statutes. This was interpreted by staff as a public announcement that there is interest in no longer receiving future feedlot proposals. At the time, the county board resisted moving forward with a community-based comprehensive plan, which would have provided an early review of developing a more, more robust feedlot ordinance. Commissioner Nelson, therefore, were directed to meet to discuss the feedlot strategy ordinance that never took place due to work conflicts. In twenty twenty-three, with a different county board, a moratorium was brought by planning and zoning staff as an agenda item, which was not considered by the county board. In response to performance review comments regarding class and comp study. The performance review discussed the timeliness in receiving class and comp information, the importance of releasing it to the employees to improve relations. It's been forty years since the county has an updated wage table in the Banning Grade system, updated job descriptions, or thoughtfully engaged the Banning Grade consultant. Deviating from the county board-approved consultant process by releasing the class and comp study in the name of improved employee relations didn't help, but adversely affected the relationships with employees, including bargaining units, resulting in a letter from a union rep complaining about the county, county board not meeting its contractual obligation by approving a class and comp study by September twenty twenty-three. As the county, um, administrator, I was not informed this was going to happen until it was communicated by my administration staff that Commissioner Nelson made the request. A change in a county board-approved proposal did not come from an individual county commissioner or staff. As county administrator, it was the responsibility to implement the county board's direction, and I would have refused that request and brought it to the county board for discussion. There does appear to be county commissioners speaking with bargaining units, individual employees, and among themselves about employees' job evaluations. It was brought to my attention by Commissioner Okason. Commissioner Nelson brought up the concept of reducing the HR director's salary in front of Commissioner Meyer and Jepson during the AMC conference. That would be an open meeting law violation. A week later, Commissioner Nelson communicated the HR director had a courthouse committee meeting that her salary needs to be reduced because some employees want that. The relationship that commissioners have with individual employees and bargaining units are adversely influencing the county board-approved process implemented by an independent consultant. In response to performance review comments regarding commissioner relationships with county administrator. Commissioner Nelson, uh, indicated he had felt excluded, uh, from county administrator because of past issues, and it's not a personal issue he has created. Commissioner Nelson has been obstructive and commative with the county administrator since twenty twenty-two. He has moved outside his authority to undermine the county administrator. He has violated the open meeting law. Concerning the incident of Commissioner Nelson threatening me with the loss of current or future employment if I did not agree to rescind an employee resignation, attorney Anne Garing was asked to investigate after the county attorney indicated a conflict of interest, quoting a friendship with Commissioner Nelson on getting involved. She responded that she interviewed the actual witnesses, witnesses to the incident. Ms. Never, Ms. Goring never responded to the county administrator and the status of the investigation. A thoughtful investigation would have shown Commissioner. A thoughtful investigation would have shown Commissioner Nelson violate the open meeting law by discussing this with three other commissioners, negotiated the rescinding of an employee resignation action without county board direction, and planned to act as the future department for that department again without county board approval. He displayed threatening behavior with one commissioner, the HR director, the county administrator, and offered to rescind a resignation. The county board did not endorse his idea. Since that event, he has talked to current and former commissioners about terminating the county administrator. During my 2022 performance review, Commissioner Nelson communicated he was giving me a poor performance review because of this accusation, and if I recanted, he would give me a good review. Since that incident, Commissioner Nelson has sought a legal opinion in January 2023 on, quote-unquote, "administrative concerns" without county board approval. He attempted to conduct an early performance review in conflict with the employee contract and county board policy. And finally, without county board approval, he and Brian McDonald, county attorney, visited me in February 2023, requesting my resignation, that, quote-unquote, "three commissioners do not want you here." Communications have been received from present and former Becker County commissioners and other county administrators that Commissioner Nelson is speaking to these and other Minnesota county commissioners to impugn my credibility as an administrator and applicant for other employment opportunities. One county administrator described the Becker County commissioner as a rogue commissioner. He has communicated with some current and former Becker County commissioners that he has the three votes to get rid of me, and that based on his communications with all department heads, none of them want me to continue as county administrator. It was communicated by Nicole Martin, said a former Becker County employee, during the February 6, 2024 open forum that Commissioner Jepson and Meyer had meetings with a collective bargaining unit on terminating the employment of the county administrator. As an at-will employee, the county administrator serves at the pleasure of the county board, so county commissioners really don't need a reason. I request pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 18162 that the written version of my statement be placed in my personnel record as disputing the charges contained in Garing's letter dated February 15, 2024, as well as the unsubstantiated statements made during my purported performance review. Under statute, this copy must remain there until the personnel record is destroyed. From Ms. Garing's letter, quote, "This public hearing is my opportunity to respond to the reasons the board is considering termination," unquote. So I expect no additional statements from commissioners. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Riddy, you have any comments? Follow-up?
I have nothing further, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I guess Ann, you're kind of instructing me we need a motion to either follow through or reinstate or whatever, so.
So if somebody wants to make a motion at this time on the proposed...
How would the motion read to terminate, to terminate?
So right at this point, the board has made a proposal and placed my administrative belief, so at this point, there would be a motion to either terminate the administrator by someone, a second, and then you can vote.
Just to terminate immediately?
To terminate, to close the hearing and then make a motion. First, we need to close the, close the public hearing.
Okay. Move to close the public hearing?
A second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then we can proceed with some type of motion.
I make a motion to terminate administrator Pat Omen, who is an at-will employee.
A motion by Barry, second?
A second.
Second by Erica. Further discussion. Hearing done. Roll call vote. Barry.
Aye.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Three to two vote to terminate. Thank you. Thanks, Ann.
I have a letter, I have a letter that I can have Carrie print out for you, so I can go on.
Okay.
Thanks, Ann.
Carrie, did we have anything else?
I did receive a copy of the letter, Ann. As I understand, Ann, you can answer if this goes in his personnel files in response.
Okay.
Just your motion to adjourn.
We'll adjourn.
You adjourn?
Yes.